Okay, everyone, if you can just call the meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. All right, my name is Kevin Murdock. I am the acting mayor for the month of October, or September, sorry. And so I'm be chairing the meeting today, this meeting of the committee of the whole. I like to start this meeting the way we start all of our meetings with just acknowledging that the land in which we're gathered is the traditional territories of the Kwangun-speaking people today, known as the, or Post-Delhi people, known as the Squamawton-Sailis First Nations, and that their connections to these lands continues to this day. And I'm gonna get right to it. We have first up on the agenda, Parks, Rec and Culture Agenda items. If I could invite Mr. Herman, Director of Parks, Recs and Culture, to the table. I'll welcome you to give a quick overview of the things in front of us, and then I'll invite questions from council, or from the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The package includes minutes from four commission meetings, June, and then special meetings that were out of the norm in July and August, and September. So I guess I'll try and give you the Reader's Digest version of the minutes. The June meeting, some of the highlights, there was a special event request that was approved by the commission, an event by the Canvas Church, a family festival at Willow's Park that's since happened on September the first. The locations of the Arts Alive pianos in the community was approved by the commission. Typically, council would have seen those at the June committee of the whole, but that meeting didn't take place. There were several questions from members of the commission on different areas that required some staff time and investigation to answer. So some questions on childcare and camp fees, on playground construction renewal, on Monterey Rec Center questions. So there was just a variety of those questions and some discussion. Those are the highlights of the June meeting. The July and August meetings, as I mentioned, were somewhat special meetings. The commission is going through a strategic framework production process. So those two meetings were devoted to that initiative. And the minutes are fairly short and sweet. There was just that one topic discussed at both of those meetings. And then the September meeting, the highlights there, I think you'll see in notes that you have elsewhere in your package, the Oak Bay Rotary Club has resurrected their, an event that they used to have as an annual event, and it's taken a couple of years off, but it's a fundraising event at the Monterey Recreation Center to raise money for a number of community issues, but one that's specifically noted is to begin collecting money to help with the renovation of the Rotary Water Park at Carnarvon Park. And as was, as has been the request in the past, they're asking that the food be provided at cost and that the rental room be waived, given that this is a fundraiser with the proceeds coming back to the community. There was some, as I had mentioned in the June meeting, there were some questions from the commission, so there was some reports back on some of those questions. And then there was a donation of a piece of artwork that was proposed, and that's for the gardener's gown sculpture. And the commission did recommend to council that that be approved and that the location at, I think that's, towards the Scented Garden.
Scented Garden, yes.
Yes, there it is. Be approved, so I believe council will be looking to deal with that. That's pretty much the highlights of those meetings.
All right, and we have the recommended, receiving the minutes and the separate items for the waiving of the fees and the public art. Are there any questions, Mr. Herman? Counselor Nathan, Counselor Kirby?
Yeah, through you, Chair. Just a quick question about the public art, the installation of the pianos, which weren't, the one piano at Cattle Point was not installed this year because I understand there was some vandalism. I had quite a few people ask me about that one. It was really a lovely placement. People liked it. So I guess I'm just wondering, is there any, I appreciate the vandalism issue, is there, I mean, I'm just wondering, it's likely that any of the sites might be subject to vandalism, and whether there's any consideration of having that reinstalled for next year, or is that a permanent decision?
Through the chair, certainly not a permanent decision. Those sites are reviewed annually, and I know that that was a popular location, but that was the one and only piano in, is that four years now, I think, that we've done this, that's ever been vandalized? So I think there was, we're a little bit gun-shy to go back to that spot, but certainly the manager of Recreation and Culture works closely with Arts Laureate to talk about those locations, and we've already discussed the potential of revisiting that site, so I'll pass those comments along.
Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to follow up on one thing that was in the June meeting minutes about the application for, I think it's the June minutes, the application for the mural from the CRD Arts Committee, and I'm wondering if we were successful, and if you could let us know more about that.
Certainly through the chair, that, we did hear back, and we were successful, but only partially. We did not get the full funding that had been requested, so we do not have full funds to carry out that project. The manager of Recreation and Cultural Services is in discussions with the CRD to talk about an extension while we figure out how we're going to come up with the funds for, to complete the project. So that's the last discussion I had with him on that topic, and that's what I know as of today.
Great, thank you. Is there any, is there a great shortfall, and would that be maybe something that could come in next year's budget?
Through the chair, it wasn't significant. I think it might have been roughly 50% of the funds, so there were a couple of angles that we were discussing options to think about, and I would suspect that there may be something in budget deliberations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there anybody from the audience who has any questions or comments in the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll be looking for three different motions, as lead over here.
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the meetings of the Oak Bay Parks and Rec Culture held July 11th, August 14th, September 5th, with the exception of the recommendations with respect to the endorsement of the waiving of fees for the rental of Monterey Recreation Center and food being provided at cost, and the accepting of the donation of the gardener's gown sculpture be approved.
Second.
All right, moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed?
And I'll move that the fees associated with the rental of the Monterey Recreation Center be waived, and that food be provided at cost in support of the Rotary Club of Oak Bay's fundraising dinner on March 9th, 2019.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? And last but not least?
I'll move that council accept the donation of the gardener's gown sculpture, and that it be placed permanently in the Scented Garden in Windsor Park.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Counselor Kirby?
I just wanted to quickly express my gratitude to not only the family that donated this sculpture, but, because it was one of my favorites, and I was sad that it wasn't selected, but can't have them all, unfortunately, but, and just thrilled to see this as a permanent installation. And I would just like to express my gratitude to the Parks and Rec and Culture Commission, the staff, and our Public Art Advisory Committee, and our Public Art, Arts Laureate, Barb Adams, who's not here tonight, but sends her regrets. And I just, I feel so grateful for the work that she's done to bring this art to our community, and it's, I think this is like the, what's the second or third? It's the third purchase outside of the selection, the public selection process, and, which really speaks to the value that I think our community sees in these works, and that people are willing to donate from their estates or from their own pockets to buy the art and make sure that it stays. And I think that is just a, like, it's a lovely legacy, and I'm really grateful to see our community embracing this program so much so that after only three or four years, three years, we now have six permanent sculptures, and that's, that's just wonderful. So thanks so much for all the work that the committee's done, and the staff that have shepherded this program along and supported Barb in her amazing efforts.
I think that's just reflection of all of the committee here. Repeat that. Thank you very much, Counselor Kirby, for saying it. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I threw you to, to Ray, Director of, whatever you're Director of. I noticed that there's some money left over for long-term maintenance with respect to the, to the sculpture. Do all of our permanent positions have, generally have a bit of money that's, that's held in abeyance, I guess, just in case something occurs in times between now and the end of permanence?
Through the chair, correct. That's part of, that's written into the policy, that part of the donation comes with a percentage that's held for, for ongoing maintenance.
Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you, Mr. Herman. So moving on to the second item on the agenda, then, we're on to the land use things, which are sometimes a bit more complicated. The first one up is the architectural setting and design for 231 King George Terrace. This is part of a four-part subdivision. The subdivision is not part of this particular application that's been dealt with. This is now looking at the setting and design of three individual houses on the lots. I'll give it, hand this over to Mr. Anderson, Director of Building and Planning, to give a summary.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we have an application referred to as ADP number 76 for 231 King George Terrace for architectural setting and design. That's for a two-story dwelling, 617 square meters, meets the zoning bylaw, the RS3 zone, and there are no variances associated with that. The advisory design panel has reviewed this application. At their July 3rd meeting, recommended approval. Staff are also supporting the, the application. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I would, is the applicant here? All right, if there's any, please be ready, if there's any questions, we'll ask you questions. Is there any questions from the committee of the applicant, or of staff at this time? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much. I was hoping the, well, I guess maybe the Director of Building and Planning could possibly speak to the AO, the approving officer's process with respect to the balancing of public interest on the subdivision. I know the subdivision is finished, but I was wondering if there's any, if there happened to have been any comments or any reports or anything that could have been shared from the AOs office with respect to the decisions that were made with respect to the, this bare land strata subdivision. In particular, I noticed that Section 9 wasn't acted on with respect to keeping an easement or keeping access to the water in terms of asking, possibly with respect to the, at the water's edge, with respect to what we're allowed to ask through Section 9 of that, of that act. I was wondering if possibly the Director could speak to that.
So before I, I'll let him, I'll let him answer, but I just, I think we have to be a little cautious here in that we're, you know, we gotta separate what's in front of us on the, on the meeting here, which is the setting and design, and it's just not part of the subdivision process. So I just want to make sure that, I'm gonna allow him to answer the question, but I just, I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole that we can't answer here. And I would say if, if it's a policy shift that is a council we want to make, that would be an appropriate place, not at the committee table. But, Mr. Anderson, can you?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It hasn't been provided in the past, that the approving officer does review all matters when considering a subdivision application. That includes the public interest, as it may affect the subdivision. With respect to this application, I am not the approving officer, but I will speak as the department head on this. The approving officer did review Section 9 associated with access to water, and determined through all the available information that there was no need to pursue the access to water. Access to water in terms of Section 9 for bare land strata regulations actually refers to public access to water, and the park next door, for example, provides that direct public access to water for the public. That would have been only one consideration for the approving officer. There would have also been consideration of any policy direction that may be in place in the district, for example, community plans, any other plans that might guide pursuit of this. But I want to restate that that section refers to basically a perpendicular access to the water for the public. I think that's probably all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate, through the chair, to express my appreciation for understanding how the, the approving officer's office in some ways works. It's a bit of a mystery for many people, and, and I know that there's a lot of leeway given, rightly so, to that office, and that while we're not supposed to interfere, I understand that we can set policies. So it's something maybe we'll, that we'll consider for the next mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. Are there any other questions of staff or the applicant on this setting and design? Applicable? No? All right, then I will call forward anybody from the audience that wishes to speak to the application. Feel free to come forward, sir, and just if I can get your name and municipality of occupation. And there should be a sheet on there, just write it down as well, that way we have it written. Oh, just if you just write your name and municipality on there as well, we'd like to have a written record. So, so welcome, Mr. Baucher. And I see the, okay, well, if you can maybe give us a little bit of a precis of this, that might be appreciated, because I think it's related to that easement again, and we are not here to talk about the easement tonight, unfortunately. So I'll get some latitude, because of course we want to have public input on it, but this would be more informing, probably future discussion at a council table from a policy perspective than it would be the specific application. So I'll go, if you enter that context, please, please go ahead.
First of all, may I direct a comment to Mr. Anderson?
You can make a comment through me to him, sure.
Through the chair. The Section 9 is not about perpendicular access to water. Section 9 specifically is about parallel strips of land along the waterfront. I think he's thinking of a different section or a different act. This, this Section 9 of the bare land strata is specifically so that the entire waterfront, if necessary, of a subdivision can be kept out of public interest for public use. And that's, in our situation, it's for a public use of safety, because people are going along that stretch of the foreshore, and it's quite dangerous, because below the high-watermark, which is public foreshore, it's almost impassable at anything but very, very low tides, and of course teenagers are going there.
So I just, again, because we're not gonna consider the specific application, I think it's helpful if you give some sort of broader context to raising, because ultimately, we're not gonna make that decision here tonight, we're just not. But it could inform, you know, the next councils, if they're considering changes to the OCP or other things, to have an understanding of the value of that policy, if you want to maybe sort of...
Okay. And of course, the OCP specifies many times, this is what Oak Bay wants. So this is completely within the OCP. What I'm here for today is to ask you to defer these building plans, the three that are going to be in front of you for today, until there is a discussion on providing that waterfront access. Until myself and my neighbors, the whole of Harling Point, feel that there's no incentive for the planning office or for the builder to do anything about providing that waterfront access, which, by the way, it was never mentioned ever in any of the documentation, so it's an omission, it's an error. And so by deferring these applications, you provide an incentive for the planning office and the builder to get together and come up with a solution. And so that's what I'm asking you today to do, is just defer this decision.
Okay, thank you. Probably I will seek a motion from the committee before I make the staff make any comment on that. I'm not seeing any. I think I have to kind of leave it there. I think you've made the request, but I have to go by the committee's actions on this one. I can't force any, any actions on this part. Is there any will? Not seeing any, so I'll just take that comment for now, and maybe if there's any other comments from the, from the audience. Oh, sorry, Counselor Zelka?
Yes, I have a desire to possibly refer this back to staff, to ask if they could work with the proponent, to see if something could be done in this area. Yes, I do have a desire to, to refer back to staff. Thank you.
Before I get a second around that, and I, I just want to make sure I understand what the, what that would actually mean in terms of a process, so if I could perhaps, Mr. Anderson or Ms. Brela?
If I may, through the chair, the subdivision application process is complete. That's where we're at with this.
So there's no, there's no process here to refer it back, to go back to? It's, it's already been approved by the approving officer, it sounds. So Counselor Zelka, is that amend your motion at all?
Yes, it does. I do notice that it's talking, it's not talking about perpendicular access. Section 9 is actually talking about a strips up to seven meters along the water, not perpendicular access. So I understand that the subdivision process is, is complete. I understand that completely, and I understand that we don't wish to interfere with the AOs officer. But I also understand that it sounds like possibly there's been something maybe overlooked, maybe. And I was wondering if, so with respect to that, that's why I would suggest it be referred back to staff, to see if maybe something could be worked out with the owner, independent of this Section 9, which I understand we're past that stage now. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to walk a fine line here, because I don't want to get in a position of trying to guess the AOs. The whole point of that approving officer position is that it's extremely hands-off in the political process.
No, no. I'm not suggesting it be sent back to the AOs, because that process is finished. This would be something that might be done between staff and the, and the owner.
Okay, I, okay. I'll ask the question of staff, if that's possible, but my impression from that answer was that that was not, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend that to, to council for us to pursue. Also, wanted to note, the approving officer is the one that considered the subdivision application, not myself, so if there's any question about what Section 9 means, it's the approving officer that makes that deliberation.
So I have a motion. I just would need a second, or if we're gonna make any further discussion on the process. I don't see one. Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments, Mr. Baucher, before?
Just that an easement for a public right-of-way can be done at any time. It doesn't have to be part of the subdivision, it can be done at any time. We do them all the time for things like sewer, sewer mains going across people's property. This is not an abnormal request, this is not a difficult request, and we don't have, it's, it's for the future. We don't have to do anything with that easement, right? Except to say, let's take that easement in case we do need it, or some council in the future needs it.
Okay, thank you very much, and certainly appreciate the information that came forward. I think, believe it was from you originally, that informed us of this, because certainly the early deliberations did not happen, so thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak to the setting and design application? And I'm gonna try and bring this conversation to the setting and design portion of this, if we, if we may. Just name and municipality, please.
My name is James Sutano, South Oak Bay. With due respect, Chair, I feel strongly that it's absolutely impossible to address, to talk about King George Terrace without addressing some of the major issues behind what has been happening. I'll try to be brief.
Sure. I'm giving some leeway for sure.
I would really appreciate if I could just slowly go through my notes here. Well, I think that this application has been divisive from the get-go, and it didn't need to be like this way. Why? Not only because of the, in my opinion, the procedures used, and I'm gonna be blunt, but I don't want to offend anybody, by staff going along the review of this application still, but also the fact that staff has also, or was also, left by their own devices, they had no guidance, guidance for, from council. Council keeps referring to the fact that council cannot interfere with subdivision, but council does have the ability to at least set policies for subdivision. And if I may, so I feel that, with due respect, the council has neglected by not doing its job, which is enacting policies, and that left the community very vulnerable. What I know, why I know about it is, because I've been working with this community on this issue for the last two years. So we don't have policy for subdivision, and also, in this very case, the interpretation of the OCP was too broad, and it's often very broad when it comes to reviewing our applications in this municipality. So, and I have problems with that, because right now, not only we have one person in charge of being the approving officer, but we do have an entire department in charge of interpreting the bylaw, which, by the way, it's a vision document, it needs to be detailed. So it's not that it's straightforward, and I don't think the, the community should blindly accept the interpretation of the OCP, mostly because I didn't vote for anybody in the, in the building department. I didn't, I voted for you. And so, just to summarize, I think we're missing checks and balances when it comes to subdivision approval. I think also the APC is not doing its job properly, which is to take, to, to make sure that the OCP is protected. Instead, the APC is reviewing variances, so there's nobody protecting the OCP. And, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna be very brief, but there's no way that this subdivision should have been approved the way it was approved. I'll finish. Oh, another aspect is, this process has shown me that we have pretty good, well-educated people in Oak Bay. We are considered the most educated community in Canada, and so it's absolutely frustrating that last minute, we had to put the community together, professionals who are in the field, specialists, to, to, to do damage control, so to speak, because with due respect, staff does not have all the knowledge about everything. So just to give an example, and I'll finish right now, we had, for example, to, to, to address this issue, to, to raise this issue at the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities, which is great, but what this means, the community's trying to say, listen, we know the business, listen to us, and that is still not happening. And I hope that with the new community engagement plan, we achieve that, but it's very unlikely. But it's very unlikely. Because in order to engage community, you need to change governance. And we have a long ways to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanum. And I think we can all acknowledge that this process is a learning experience for everybody in terms of how we set the policies at the council level and how those guide the subdivision process. But it is, yeah, quite hands-off. So it's not as quite as direct. Councilor Neen?
I'd just like to say, thank you to the public and for the really thoughtful letters that have come forward. And my understanding here is the application has been approved. We can't backtrack that. But it feels like we've been caught flat-footed here around this because I doubt there's a person in the room who doesn't value that for sure and if we could have access to it. But we got behind on this one. And I hope that whoever, that future council will set this as a priority, that they consider establishing some kind of plan for that for shore that makes it more accessible. Because without the plan, the approving officer is constrained to make a decision like what has been made. So again, I just thank the public for having brought the thoughts forward. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak to this application? Please come down.
So my name is Alva Jensen, and I live in Oak Bay.
Thanks for writing it down. Thank you.
So Chair and council members, I have to say, I'm tired of hearing, I'm sorry. We've been in this process for over a year, and the main concern has been public interest. And we still are hearing the concern. We're hearing the council is going to consider it next time. I think it's good to learn from it. We had a public apology. So I've had many private apologies for the way this system has worked. And I know that you're learning from it. But I'd like to say in this case, that this is a one-time opportunity. You can't learn for next time. This is the only time that this subdivision could have an easement. And it is incorrect to say that it cannot be done. You heard Steve say that it is nothing to do with the subdivision. We know it's been approved. But we know that easements can be made. And the only time that they can be made is that if the land has not been sold or if the officers declare that it's not in public interest. And I think there's one other thing. So there are some legal things that tell you that when an easement can be made. This is the only time it can be done in the history of this land. And it's very prime property on that waterfront next to the park. And so we know that Oak Bay wants that access. And I ask you as council members to really consider thinking of how this can be reviewed and acted on before it is too late. And if you don't know if it's too late, check it out. Check out the legality of it. Because there are many, as you said, many educated people. I don't know all of that. So I just would like to say that. Now, now that I'm up here, I would also like to say that I've looked at the plans. So we live just above the development. And I don't know if there's a time to talk about individual places or if you would like me to say now what I have to say about the lot one.
Sorry, I'm just going to go right through that lot one. Lot one is which address? Mr. Buffett, if you could?
It would be 231.
Yes, the proposed, proposed 231. Should I talk to that?
Please do, that's what we're here for.
Okay, thank you. So I've looked at the analysis that the planner has given about the application. In the analysis, on page two, that's the executive summary, it's noted that there's a restrictive covenant on the property limiting the maximum height of the building to 21 meters above sea level. It's stated in the proposal that is implied to in the covenant. I would like to point out that the rooftop in the plan is measured at 20.97 meters. This height does not include the chimney. The chimney is the highest constructed point and needs to be included in measuring the building height. This measurement would break the height covenant registered in the Land Titles Act. Thank you.
Ms. Jensen, I think that's a point well-deserving of being referred over to staff. So let's give them a chance to have a look at that, to respond. Thank you.
Graham will just confirm, but a chimney is a projection and it's not included in the height calculation.
The height is building height, not the Oak Bay definition of roof height. It's with land titles, not Oak Bay.
So if I could just get clarification, because building height is a technical term for part of the building. Specifically, is that the same definition for land titles as it is for? I'll just wait for the, I'll just wait for the staff to come back on that.
Thank you.
So typically in a zoning bylaw, there's a section called general regulations. And in that, there are projections that are listed chimneys, for example. And they're not included in the calculation of height.
I think the question here was that there is a, there's a specific covenant made because I know the land, so there's a, this house was the previous house for that land. And when they put that one house on it, it was there to make, ensure there was no blockages of the view.
That's right.
And so there was, that was the nature of that covenant was to prevent any interruption of the view from the upper house. So I think that's probably a little different than a generic term of building.
I would say so, restrictive covenant. Thank you.
May I leave Mr. Buffett to look while we invite another person to the counter or to the table?
Anthony Mears, South Oak Bay.
Mr. Mears, welcome.
The number one responsibility of council is to protect the public interest. In terms of, in terms of bareline stratas and that can override zoning bylaws, I've talked to a number of approving officers, and I know this from being a social planner in Vancouver. You cannot not have any policy and guidelines for your approving officer. Think about that. There's no safeguards.
Mr. Mears?
That's the situation in Oak Bay. I'm just.
I just want to, I think it's actually, because that's not entirely, there are guidelines. And perhaps I can let Mr. Anderson just ask.
There are guidelines?
There are guidelines.
No, there's subdivision guidelines.
Subdivision guidelines.
No, bareline stratas of guidelines.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, you have to have some policy around some of this stuff. If you're overriding your zoning bylaws, and we don't have any. I mean, that's the bottom line here. And it certainly showed up here. I mean, I've said this before in council. There was so much in this subdivision that didn't get addressed that I don't know what subdivision would ever qualify for protecting the public interest. It would just, just didn't happen. And I think, I think you better take a long look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mears. Are we ready for an answer on Ms. Jensen's question?
So from our zoning bylaw, there is a height exception under section 4.7. Sorry, can you hear me? And it exempts many things. And one of the pieces down towards the bottom of it is roof-mounted chimney or roof-mounted smokestacks. So it starts at the maximum permitted height of a building or structure set out in the regulations for each zone within this bylaw may be exceeded. It goes on for church spires, things like that. And then hits chimneys and roof-mounted smokestack below that. So it would not be included under the zoning bylaw.
So recognize, and I think I'll answer for you, Ms. Jensen. Because this isn't a, no, 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 just wait a second. You can come back up at the microphone if necessary. But I think for clarification, this thing to do with the zoning bylaw, there's a restrictive covenant on that land? And that's the wording that I think that is, needs to be clarified is, and I think it's a fair question to just make sure that the wording of the covenant is such that that's exempted. Do we have that wording handy?
If I may, that the zoning bylaw still applies. Covenant speaks to the matters, but you refer to your overall zoning bylaw when you're talking about height. It might set a height limit of 21 meters. But the zoning bylaws is what you refer to when you're measuring all your regulations, all your considerations. So the zoning bylaw still is a factor when a covenanted height is put in place.
Do we have a copy of that covenant just here to confirm the wording of it? No, okay. All right. We have another speaker?
Thank you, Marion Cummings. Oh, yes. Thank you. On Sunny Lane nearby, and I'm grateful to be a guest on Le Quangan Territory. And hearing the speakers tonight reminds me that this is an excellent opportunity for green shore stewardship. It's tucked into our official community plan. And this aspect of incorporating strips above high tide line, that when they're actually offered as an opportunity to be in the public domain, ought to be a part of the green shores stewardship. And I think the fact that we have no guidelines points to the need to incorporate guidelines for the future. And I appreciate Stephen Belker looking into the nature of the shoreline there and how there are otters and seals. And I might be wrong, but I think there'd be shore-nesting birds. So access is important, but in a way that would respect the private property nearby and the sensitive ecosystem. So I hope all these considerations will be taken into account. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak? All right, so we have in front of us the setting and design for 231 King George Terrace. There's still a, a councilor name?
A question to staff that came up from the public that I think is relevant to our decision here this evening. So the comment was made by somebody, and I don't know the answer, so I'm asking to staff if they could explain this. Is, somebody said that an easement can be made after the AO has made the subdivision decision. Could you explain that as a possibility or not in this context, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Certainly. You would have to have a willing property owner. And then obviously, there would be some consideration of what that might cost the municipality to do so. But it would basically be a mutual opportunity.
Any other questions, comments? That might be mine. Is there any other, I need, we're looking for a motion here from the committee or for pressure for further clarification from staff. But can't just sit here. We have to do something.
So I move the option number one in the, in the report. Second.
This is to recommend a council approval of setting and design. Has there any further discussion on that? Counselor Kirby? Counselor, and then Mayor Jensen?
I just wanted to make comment on both the letter from Mr. Belker and several others regarding access to the water. Given that this isn't a part of our decision tonight, I just, but on the side, I would like to mention that I understand the desire for access to the public forshore. But I think when we discussed this before, it was, when it came to council prior to this, there was discussion about it, but this is a fairly rocky section. And it's not like a beach access where there's a safe and comfortable access to the water. It's a rocky access. And so it didn't seem practical. And, or like, it's not a safe access and something that, but we did discuss it. And so I just want people to know that it isn't, hasn't been like overlooked, I don't think. I think this is something that we did discuss at some point and didn't fight hard to create that access because it wasn't mentioned by the public at the time. And it was also considered to me as a fairly unsafe access. But I, and I think we had lots of discussion about green shores and ensuring that the restoration of the shoreline was done as much as possible with the removal of the pool that was there and encouraging the applicant to make sure that there was appropriate plantings and more natural restoration of the area. So I feel like we did do as much as we could to respect and restore the environment to the way it was. And, yeah, I just, I don't want people to think that this council was dismissive or overlooked something as important as that. And it matters very much to us to see this, our forshore restored and repaired as much as possible. And we have all learned from the green shores program and done lots of reading. And I know I have, and several of us have attended the Community Association events where they talk about the forshore and the green shores program. So please, please rest assured in some senses that we are doing our best to move in that direction and that these things happen incrementally. And that eventually, we may get to the place where we do, we are able to restore enough of the shoreline to have pathways and access. But it can happen overnight, unfortunately. And I just, I just wanted to make sure that that view was expressed, that we're not just sitting here ignoring your requests. We do actually, we're listening and we care and we are doing our best with staff to move in that direction. And I think the OCP starts in that direction, but I don't know that it goes as far as reclaiming or taking easements of private land. And that we have, nor do I think we have the resources at this point to do that kind of, to make those kinds of purchases or agreements. But, yeah, I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I, okay, fair enough. I just, we have to have all the conversation at the microphone. So I'll invite, if anybody wants to come back and make the comment, Mr. Jensen?
I just wanted to address the issue brought up by Ms. Jensen, no relation. And that has to do with the wording of the covenant. It is an interesting issue. I think that one that needs to be clearly resolved at some point. I think this motion should go forward. But when it does come to council, I think it would be helpful if we have some kind of understanding of what the interplay between wording in a covenant and the bylaws. So if we have certain words used in the covenant, it strikes me, there's probably three ways, four, I suppose, ways you can interpret it. One, sometimes documents, and I haven't seen the covenant, will, the documents themselves will define what the terms mean that are being used in that document. Kind of almost like a little interpretation section. And sometimes they're drawn up in that fashion. The other is, then the question, the next question is, when you're, if there's nothing in there to interpret it, to give meaning to the definition sections, do you look to a provincial statute because it's filed with the Land Titles Act? Is that where you then look next to the definitions? And I know provincial statutes and interpretation acts within the provincial realm are easy to access, and they may provide some guidance. and they may provide some guidance. Or the other guidance is what are, how are bylaws read and how they interpret these kind of phrases? So I think we need to have a better understanding of the interplay with that. Because otherwise, typically, I mean, the courts would look at the plain meaning of the words. What are the plain meanings of the words? Unless there's some definition either in provincial or in local government regulations or in the covenant itself. And I think that needs to be clarified. I think clarified for everyone's interest. I mean, if somehow we interpret it the wrong way, then the municipality is at risk of being challenged, and we don't want to be that. And on the other hand, I think it's fair for the neighbors to understand the appropriate way to interpret certain words in the covenant. And I suspect this is not something that's brand new. So I'm sure it's come up before in other matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. Councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. A question through you to the proponents, if I may. It's the question that must be asked. Is the proponent willing to consider an easement on this land with respect to access to the shore?
I guess, I think that's actually maybe, I'm just going to ask of staff if that's a question that we can call up the applicant to answer.
If I might, on a point of order, I think it's unfair in this forum to ask that. No one's prepared to discuss that. This came to us strictly on sighting and design. That's what we're here to decide.
I'll uphold that point of order. I think that's fair, although I will, that would be something for the staff to discuss with the applicant in the course between now and the council meeting.
I absolutely agree with you. And that's actually what the point of why I suggested earlier on a referral back to staff, so that those sort of discussions could occur maybe behind the scenes without having to ask the question in a two-fourth rate way in front of everyone. So I'm not comfortable asking the proponent this question, but I don't know how else to ask the question that needs to be asked. So I do appreciate that maybe staff will have an opportunity to have a discussion and that we will have a clarification, not only of the wording of the covenant in terms of building height, but also what might be possible. I just also wanted to point out, in our official community plan with respect to ocean shoreline, I am on page 56, and this has been an approved vision document for Oak Bay. Work with senior agencies to discourage and remove privately owned walls and other built features along the shoreline. Now, that is senior agencies, but it does talk about privately owned walls, comma, especially where they extend beyond private property onto the foreshore. So it's not exclusively, but it does talk about built features, private walls right to the shoreline, which essentially this particular mall is. So I just wanted to suggest that this may have been another area that could have been overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zelka. Any further discussion from the committee? I don't see any. I'll just add my comment as well before I call the question. I think that question of the covenant is a critical one. We need to have a very clear understanding of what that is because the intent of it was clearly to prevent any blockages of view. So it's very important for us to make sure that if this is being approved, it is not contributing that intent. Without any further questions, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, opposed, Councillor Zelka opposed? So with that, there is a, this application will then go forward to the October 9th for consideration by council. So the recommendation is to council to approve it in October 9th. In the intervening time, we should get some clarification of some of those questions. Thank you. The next item is the same, Strata subdivision. This one has architectural sighting and design ADP 00077, 233 King George Terrace. Any additional comments here, Mr. Anderson?
No, just to note, the advisory design panel recommended approval, and staff also support the application.
Thank you. Keep standing by, applicant. We'll see if we have any questions for you. Are there any questions of the committee on this setting and design? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this portion of it? So this is 233 King George Terrace. Mr. Baucher, we have your name from before, so please go ahead.
My fear of speaking in public places. The situation, as I see it here, is one that I mentioned in my letter, which is that the very first responsibility of councillors, I'm not, I don't think it includes the mayor. It certainly doesn't include staff. But the very first responsibility of councillors under the Provincial Community Charter Act under section 115 is to consider public interests. It's actually, it states to consider the municipality and the community, the community are us. And unless some kind of negotiation goes forward for this easement, you aren't doing that. And I don't see how you're going to get the two parties discussing it unless you take a stand on it. Because there's no incentive for them to do that. And the other thing I wanted to make clear is the, take a breath. The original omission was by the developer's surveyor. When he made his subdivision application form, he was supposed to list all of the easements and the future easements for this property. And this one was missed. And so what we have here is something that didn't actually start in our planning office. Something I still think wasn't a mission because they were thinking of different axes. They were thinking of vertical access rather than parallel access. And because the developer surveyor is partially at fault, I think there is a good reason for the planning office and the developer to get together and talk. Under section nine of the Strata Act, there is no closure on this. From what I found in the law, there's only three ways to close it. One is the easement. By the way, there's confusion with the easement because if it was a larger subdivision, it would actually be the gift of the land rather than an easement. But because it's a small subdivision, it's such a narrow strip of land that it's usually done by easement. So you can close it by giving the easement. You can close it by the land being sold. In other words, the developer finishes his project and it's all sold, so the ownership changes. Or you can close it by the approving officer publicly saying for the record that in their opinion, there is no public interest in this easement, which of course is false. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baucher. Are there any other questions of staff from council? Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak? I'm chair, so I need somebody else to make a motion. Go ahead, Councillor Zelka.
Thank you. A question through you to staff with respect to something like a developer's survey. If it was found to be at error in law, is there a recourse that the district can make if decisions were made on incorrect information? I just wanted to know what might be possible in this case.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I can review that for you. I don't have an answer to that question at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Ne?
I guess just, you know, I have, I have no issue asking that, you know, if the applicant wants to have a talk with staff about the possibility of an easement. But we do have to bear in mind, it's a volun, as I understood what staff said, it is voluntary. But to satisfy our conscious, I mean, would we, through your chair, I'd like to ask staff, to have that conversation, would we need a motion to make that request? If you have the conversation, appreciating it is a voluntary agreement around the easement.
I'm not sure if staff's prepared to answer that, but I'll throw it over if they are.
Again, it's unusual. I'm not sure a council motion on a matter that has been considered as part of an approved subdivision would be appropriate. So I would suggest not.
Okay, thank you.
We are sitting as committee as well, so we have sort of softer, softer powers at this table. All right.
Have we had a motion?
I, we don't have a motion yet. I have someone who's looking at me like they want to speak. So Mr. Sultanam, did you want to speak? Please come forward if you wish. I haven't closed the.
Thank you, James Sultanam, South of Bay. Just to follow up on what's just been said. So if it's voluntary for the applicant to accept or not an easement, that doesn't seem fair in a sense that this could have been avoided. And so what I'd like to, just to mention is that who is accountable for the mistakes? I mean, if I make a mistake, I'm accountable for it. If my staff makes a mistake, the staff will probably get fired at one point. So it, and I don't want to be rude, it's just that there's no accountability. So the approving officer approved, overlooked a few things, and that's it. No option. Sorry. Thank you.
So I think it's just important to be clear that, I know we've had statements that that's happened. I just, in fairness, I don't think we have in any way, shape, or form, you know, confirmed that somebody overlooked something. There was consideration by the approving officer in the consideration of the guidelines and policies that are in place before them and in the context of the official community plan. And they made that determination under the law, and they have autonomy to do that. So I think mistakes are, I think it's a strong word in this case. And so I think there's been a lot of discussion here, again, outside of the sighting and design portion here. But I think what I've heard from staff is there's a couple of things that have been raised that are going to be, you know, under consideration as part of this. But again, we are a committee looking at setting and design. So we can't direct anything at this point at this table. All we can do is make a recommendation to the other body.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm just going to reiterate this issue when council reconvenes or meets. Because if someone decided that there's no public interest, when it's, when we clearly, when clearly there is public interest, okay, it may not be a mistake, but there's something wrong, whatever you call it, the word. And I'd like to see people being accountable for it because otherwise this will continue. Thank you.
And Ms. Rella, did you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just that at the subsequent meeting, I think staff will bring back a discussion about how public interest is actually defined. Certainly around applications where there is a variety of perspectives. Staff does look to the policies and subdivision bylaws that are in place. Staff stands by the process to date and respectfully recognizes the difficulty council faces in moving these applications forward. But a reminder that the subdivision has been approved, it has been registered, and the matter at hand is design and sighting. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rella. Councillor Kirby? Hopefully back on the topic of setting and design.
Yes, do we have, do we have a motion?
No, we do not have a motion.
I would like to move the recommendation I set out in the report by the.
To approve the setting and design as laid out?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And I just would like to make a comment that this is the one that's right on the water where the pool was replaced with some native plantings. And we were told in the initial discussion of this application that the wall, removing the wall, the retaining wall that exists and removing the retaining wall that acts like a fence between the park and the property would create a hazard and safety hazard for people in the park. And that it wouldn't, the removal of the concrete wall would be more of an environmental issue than if we were to leave it in place and replace the pool and the area with native planting. So we did discuss that earlier in earlier stages, and so I just wanted to make that point. So that's why I'm supporting this application.
Thank you, Councillor Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair. I wish to move referral of this item back to staff for further work. I don't feel it's ready yet. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a second there. Okay. No second there. We'll leave it at that. We have a motion on the table to approve. Any further discussion? All right, I certainly appreciate the staff's willingness to have a look at some of the issues raised here. And I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, Councillor Zelka opposed? Thank you very much. And moving on to item number four, which is the setting and design of 239 King George Terrace, ADP 00079. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Chair. So this application for architectural setting and design for 239 King George Terrace is for a two-story building, 576 square meters in size. It meets the zoning and there are no variances required. The advisory design panel considered this application and has recommended approval. Staff are also in support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing any, is there anybody from the audiences who wishes to speak? Please come forward. I am going to ask that we try and keep this on the topic of setting and design if possible because we have things to go through, so. Please have a seat here, and again, just give your name, and then we'll get into this clarification. Go ahead.
Clarify some of the things that were said here that weren't quite true. Like I said, with this, with this easement, there is no closure in the law that I can see. No closure at all, other than the three I mentioned. And the section nine sets a precedent. It's a very strange precedent. It's a very unusual precedent, especially for provincial law dealing with land matters. But the precedent is this. In order to protect public interest, the approving officer can withhold approvals until an easement is given with no compensation. Right? You can withhold approvals. That precedent has been set. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mears, have you had your name from before?
I just want to clear up a couple of issues that was mentioned earlier. And that is that the wall is being investigated by the province. It's on the foreshore. No one knows who built it. There's plenty of access the other way. There's lots of beaches. And most of the properties there have stairs down, so they've got access. I think it's dangerous. It's a big wall. And if someone was walking up there and there was any kind of issue that they couldn't get back, you know, to the quarter of a mile or so, they need to get out that way. And besides that, it's not, there's not supposed to be any blockage of the foreshore, period. And the other point I want to make is that, and I don't know if it's appropriate at this point, but the approving officer's initial primary report was not provided to council. It had all kinds of conditions in there. And I pointed this out, but I'm not clear why that wouldn't have been provided to council in the first place. And the second thing is that I can't ever remember this wall being discussed, period. And I was at all the meetings, and I'm sure I didn't sleep through it. Thank you.
Just to be clear, perhaps, the wall that's in discussion here, the one that sort of extends down, that's not actually part of the setting and design, I don't believe. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Buffett? It's not?
No, we'd be principally looking at the sighting and design of the buildings and the structures themselves. Also, some landscaping has been discussed at advisory design panel, but principally sighting of buildings and structures.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the table? Do we have a motion? We don't for this one. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to it before we get to that? No, all right.
I'd move approval.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Councilor Zelka?
Sorry, Chair. Thank you very much. I apologize.
No, I apologize. You missed it. Missed your hand.
I move to refer this item to staff for further work. I don't believe it's ready yet. Thank you.
All right, I'm just looking for a second there. Okay, thank you for the motion. No seconders. We have the main motion on the table. Any other discussion? No, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Councilors Alka opposed. Thank you very much. That concludes that section of the King George Terrace properties. I just want to thank the residents for bringing these issues forward and for the applicant and for staff, looking forward to some of those questions, to some of those, or answers to some of those hard questions. We're up to item number five now on the Upland Sitting and Design at 3050 Lansdowne Road. Is the applicant here? Thank you, welcome. We may or may not have to have you come forward on this one, so. If I may hand this over to, who am I handing it over to? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, Director of Building and Planning.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, an application of Upland Sitting and Design, ADP 93, and it's for 3050 Lansdowne Road, a single-family dwelling and an outdoor pool proposed for the property. Zoning is RS2. There are no variances proposed as part of this. It's a 616 square meter dwelling, two-story, as I note. And the advisory design panel has reviewed and recommended approval, and staff also support the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Councilor Kirby?
I just had a question about the report that mentions that the advisory design panel had some concern, and there's included in, in the report, the house within 500 feet that looks very similar. And I just was wondering if you might comment on that and just explain a little bit to me what, how, what the difference between the two are now, or if this was a great departure. It just caught my eye.
If you go to the plans on the last page, it'll help you as they describe it, because there's some explanation there. Mr. Anderson?
That's what I was referring to, is the images on the last page, yeah.
So the initial plans that came forward to advisory design panel did have a design that, from a staff perspective, we noted that there were some similarities that might invoke the 500-foot rule. We call it, in other words, if there's a similar style. So in fact, through the design panel discussions with the applicant and subsequent review and revisions by the applicant, the design moved away from that similarity. And so we were able to move it forward for a design panel to consider just the merits of the application and not be concerned with the 500-foot rule law.
Thank you. So it's enough of a departure from that design to merit?
Yes.
A consideration? Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions of the applicant or of staff from the county committee? All right, I guess, is there anybody from the audience who wishes to speak to this application? I may or may not call you forward still. I don't see anybody else coming forward on this. Then I would just look for a motion.
Move the recommendation. Second.
The recommendation is to approve. If approved, this will go to the council meeting October 9th, where it would be received in the minutes and approved there. Is there any other discussion at the table? I'm seeing none. I just have one comment, and that's just the, and not, not to this application, because it's within the boundaries of the zoning, and it addresses all of the setting and design. But I do have concern over time that these houses are all creeping much farther to the, closer to the, to the sidewalks than they have been in the past. So this is substantially closer to the sidewalk, as we're seeing quite a lot of in the Uplands. And I think we've discussed the possibility of revisiting the zoning in the Uplands many times. And I think this is probably a, you know, we just need to sort of consider this. It's the only place in Okbe that doesn't have the contextual setbacks. Most places in Okbe have setbacks that are sort of related to the houses around them. And I think that's something we may want to consider in the future. Not enough to hold this application up. I certainly appreciate that it's done well within the boundaries allowed within it, but just something I think for committee and future councils to consider as a priority. With that, any other discussion? All right, I'll call the, oh, Councilor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have to agree with you. I recall a house on Exeter that we actually bounced back because it was too close to the, to the front lot line a couple of years back. So thank you. I'll be voting in favor.
Well, we'll find out for sure when I call the question. Can I, any other discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you for the application. We're moving on to item number six, which is the Upland Setting and Design, ADP 00096 through and 45 Exeter Road. Mr. Anderson, quick overview?
Thank you, Chair. So this application is with respect to altering the exterior cladding materials of an accessory building that's currently under construction. This accessory building actually had come before council April 2016 and had been approved at that time. It's a 38-square-meter building. The materials are wood and stone. No variances associated with this application. The design panel as well reviewed on September 4th and recommended approval, and staff are also recommending support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for this? Okay, thank you. This is a fairly minor outbuilding discussion. Any questions by the committee of staff or the applicant? Any questions of the audience on this application? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to this committee.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Thank you. And number seven, setting and design 2475 Lansdowne Road, ADP 00098. Mr. Anderson?
I'm on. Thank you, Chair. So this is a renovation to a single-family dwelling. This, too, was approved previously, October 2017, but they're now altering a few features. The front entry stair, windows and cladding materials are being proposed to be altered. It's within the zoning, no variances. The design panel has reviewed again September 4th, recommended approval, and staff are supporting the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions by the committee? Is the applicant here? Any, any comments or questions from the audience, the public? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to this committee.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll just make a quick comment, because I was out on site day and looking at the plans. Really an exceptional restoration, renovation of a house. So it certainly dramatically improves the existing house, and good work done. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we have a development variance permit application, DVP 00084 at 609 Oliver Street. Mr. Anderson, if you can give a quick overview?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This application had become, come before committee of the whole at the last meeting. And with respect to the citing of a heat pump system in the side yard for a single-family dwelling, the system is in place as we speak. This was deferred by the committee, and there was a request to have the applicant consider options to reducing the noise level that was in the, the application that came before the committee. The, I guess the critical noise level in our bylaw is a 40-decibel noise level gram, seven feet from the property line. 9.8 feet. That's, go gram. So now the proponent has considered the suggestions, and they're proposing to replace one of the two heat pumps with a quieter model. It is rated at, and that's where it's rated, at 44 decibels at seven feet from the property line. My apologies. And they're also proposing to construct a sound alleviation wall. This has been reviewed, and an engineer's report is provided in your package. This is, proposes that it would reduce the sound level to the 40 decibel that is in our, in our bylaw. And with that, I think I'll turn it back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'm assuming both the neighbor and the applicant are here. I won't call you for anybody forward unless there's questions of the committee at this time. Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. A question through you to staff. I appreciate the engineer's report with respect to what is proposed to be. Will there be a follow-up, six months, a year down the road, or some way of actually getting a measurement as to what was actually built, to ensure that it meets the report design?
Councilor, Mr. Anderson?
That is something that could be done. I mean, it would be, have to note in the file for that. Again, this is both the modified heat pump and the sound wall engineered should provide us with that rating that we're looking for.
If I have a follow-up? So then, then I would imagine, just from staff's perspective, this might be on a, on a, I don't know. If a neighbor came by to suggest that it may need to be checked or something like that, as opposed to staff actually going out and having it in their file, something like that. All right, thank you.
Any other? Councilor Brithwaite?
Oh, yeah, my question was similar to that, actually, because I seem to remember when this was before us in June or whenever it was, that there was a lot of concern from the neighbor. And so it's going to be very interesting. I'm not sure if the neighbor's going to come and talk to the sound that's there right now. Has this wall been built yet, or it hasn't been built yet? No?
No, it is not.
So it'll be, okay, I'll wait then and see what comes from the neighbor.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'll invite the public up to speak on this application. Please come forward.
Esther Patterson, Woodlawn Crescent.
I don't think you need to write down your name or fine.
Just a point of interest, because I believe the testing here is done at the source of the equipment. And I just, out of curiosity, wanted to understand. Many municipalities tested at the source. Many test it where the noise is received. So if it was a bedroom window or a balcony or something like that. In fact, I think Victoria does that. So I'm just wondering that in the future, if this does go in, if that is part of the testing that perhaps would be considered.
We would be going from property line. The way our bylaw is written, it basically says from any property line. So the closest point in the engineer's report, it shows a diagram of a number of places that were tested, and so it would be basically the closest point at an adjoining property line to the equipment.
So that would be at ground level?
Yeah, it would typically be at ground level. The bylaw would allow for sound to be sort of measured at any point, I believe. But I'd have to reread the section, but it allows for some flexibility, but typically would be measured just at head height.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Is there another member of the public who wishes to speak? Welcome, Mr. Holmes. You wrote down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling.
And I am the neighbor. I would like to start by referring to the report to the committee of the whole dated 7th of September 2018. I'm sure everyone on council would like to make an informed decision, and you can only make informed decisions with correct information. The report says that the sound screen will not be visible from the street. As I pointed out on the 16th of July Committee of the Whole meeting, it is visible from the street, along with the heat pumps. And I have a photograph here that I took while standing on a municipal property, and pumps and temporary screen are visible. I don't know if anyone wants to see this.
And I believe you circulated that at the last meeting.
Okay, well, the correction was not made.
Thank you.
Okay. The heat pumps were sound tested on the 26th of July, but as I pointed out in the previous meeting, that they were tested with the pumps on at minimum setting. The applicant has said to me that heat pumps make more noise when they are heating than they do when they are cooling. And in July, they were definitely cooling. So I've said that, you know, if you want to do proper testing, let's do it with, with the heat pumps heating and on at full force. I'm told that's the correct term to use. The development variance permit has an attachment two, and attachment two says that the proposed noise wall will be eight feet zero inches tall. However, the next page, attachment three, says that the noise wall will be five feet zero inches tall. So I don't know which is correct.
We're just making note of that question, and we can ask the applicant for the clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
The report also states that installing a cantilever would prevent noise from traveling upwards. Attachment two shows a cantilever. Attachment three does not. Again, I don't know which I should believe. The engineer's report also says that by wrapping the noise wall around the heat pumps so that the pumps would be enclosed on all four sides, two sides by the house itself and the other two sides by the noise wall, that the performance of the wall would be significantly improved. Attachment two shows that the noise wall will be stopping one foot zero inches short of the house wall, but attachment three shows the noise wall abutting the house. Again, I don't know which is correct. On August 2nd, the applicant came to my door, and we had a conversation. And then on the 8th of August, Mr. Buffett telephoned me, and we had a conversation. I then wrote a letter to both men, because I wanted to lay out my position and what I understood was being proposed. As my understanding, there are three proposals. Install a sound deadening screen. Install a new and quieter heat pump. And Mr. Sharples offered to install at his cost a triple-glazed bedroom window. Currently, my window is only double-glazed. My wife and I appreciate the proposals and the efforts being done, but as I said in the last committee of the whole meeting, I'm not an expert in sound mitigation. So I don't know if any of these proposals, or any combination of these proposals, are going to work or not. So that's where I am. I really feel I'm no farther ahead than I was on July 16th. I don't know if this is going to work. And I asked the question last time, what if we do these and they don't work? What then? Thank you.
Maybe I'll just ask a quick question on that. So there was testing done with the new heat pump on the site. Is that sort of temporarily rigged up? Is that the scenario that was tested? Or is it just taken off of the specifications of the new heat pump by may of staff?
I believe it's taken from the specifications of the new heat pump.
We can, is the applicant here? Maybe we can call you forward at this point. Come forward.
If I may, would like the engineer to speak?
That's fine, of course, yes, yeah. You can choose who you want to speak. You should have the applicant as a, as a group. I just write down your, maybe you just read your names aloud to the microphone so the audience at home can...
Andrew Williamson.
Rob Sharples.
Thank you.
So to clarify, we tested...
Need to move the microphone over.
So to clarify, we tested with the existing heat pump in place, and the prediction that we're going to meet the bylaw is based on the specifications of the new heat pump that's going to be installed.
Can you tell us what the difference in the specifications between the two heat pumps is?
I don't know what the specifications are of the existing heat pump, but it was creating a noise level of about 55 at the property line. And the new heat pump is supposed to create a noise level of approximately 43 decibels. of approximately forty-three decibels. And we expect the, the enclosure that's being constructed will be able to achieve about a five-decibel reduction. So, that should push us down below forty, assuming just one heat pumps operating at a time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brithwaite?
And would that be at the heating level or the cooling level? Because I think that's one of the things that the neighbor was concerned about.
Yes, we, we base the predictions on the heating level. But there is not a lot of difference between the two. They're only about one decibel apart.
Thank you.
Other question, Counselor Neay?
If, if they're both operating, what would that, like, what's the probability of them both going off at the same time?
I believe there is about two or three decibels difference from both of them being up, which takes us over the forty decibels.
Right. And do they go off at the same time or?
No, because they're heating each floor separately. Each floor is separate, so highly unlikely they're going off at the same time. Or one would be starting up and the other one would be going on off.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the, any question of staff is fine. You're allowed to do that, too.
Thank you. So, through you, Chair, there was a question from the neighbor about what would happen if all of these mitigation things were going in place? And what would happen if at that time, the decibel level was still too high? Then what would happen? So, could you please let us know what would happen at that point in time? Just to reiterate, I think you mentioned it before, but just to reiterate.
Yeah. So, I, I think it was mentioned earlier, but we would certainly go on a complaint basis that the noise levels were too high. And then we would go and investigate that and determine whether or not, in fact, they were above the decibel levels.
And if I may, to have a follow-up through that, through you? Then if that, if it was that they were above the decibel level, council would be within its right or, or the bylaw officer would be in their right to ask that heat pump to be removed or mitigated in some other way, shape, or form?
Yeah, then the, the request initially would be to reduce the sound levels. And there, there may be several methods to, to do that.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to ask the question that was asked by the, by the neighbor. Just to clarify, there's heights of five foot or eight foot, cantilever, no cantilever. I think those are the two primary questions that were left outstanding in the terms of the design.
My understanding was it's going to be constructed to eight feet with a cantilever.
Thank you. Mayor Jensen?
Are there reasonable alternatives to deal with the neighbor's concerns?
Noise-wise?
That would be one.
Not given the current location of the heat pump.
Okay.
I think building an enclosure and selecting the quietest heat pump possible and staggering their operation, I think, is a reasonable approach.
And, and what about the issue of relocation? Can you address that?
Are you asking if the question is, can they or what the impact would be?
Yep. Is it possible? And, yeah. What are the steps?
Mr. Sharples, go ahead.
We could put them on the roof. And, but then now you have the whole neighborhood that's going to be listening to heat pumps. And we would keep within the decibels. So, yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Kirby?
And I, I just was looking at the, the drawings and then the image provided by the neighbor. I'm just wondering if there's an, a hedge that could be planted or some, some greenery that could also act as a screen over time? I mean, no hedge grows instantly, but, but a thick cedar hedge or something like that that might help with a, a buffer, just as a suggestion.
That wouldn't be very effective acoustically, no. You need a pretty wide swath of foliage to start to get any reduction.
Okay. Is there anybody else, committee wants to speak to this? Seeing none, all right. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to speak to it? Please come forward. Applicants, why don't you just take a seat? Or maybe one of you just move off to the side temporarily in case there are questions directed at you.
James Suton, again. A question to staff, if, through you, Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Does the city have any power to ask the applicant to remove the heat pump if it turns out that the, the, the noise problem's not mitigated? And by that, I mean, do we have a bylaw or any regulation that would allow that? As opposed to, of course, I assume that you would go through negotiation first. And I'm sure that the applicant would try to accommodate. But if not, is there, does the city have any power to ask the applicant to remove? That's my first question for me.
Just, and I think to clarify our question, the question is if the variance is approved, then, and you relying on the noise bylaw, is there a mechanism to have any other, any, any significant recourse? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, if the noise levels prove to exceed that, then the owners would be required to reduce those noise levels. So, that, that's our bylaw. We enforce our bylaw.
If I may, Chair, I, I don't think my question was answered. I talked about removal.
Okay.
Of not mitigating noise. Because it may be at one point, I'm being, working on the worst-case scenario, it may not be possible to reduce. My question was about the removal.
No, it's, it's a fair question. It comes down to the point of this is that we're dealing with the variance, but the real issue here is the noise. And so, at the end of the day, that's going to be the defining factor of this is successful or not, if the noise is at an acceptable level. So, under the noise bylaw, can you answer that question? What, what the maximum recourse is allowed?
Well, again, if we find that the noise levels exceed the bylaw, we enforce that. And the applicants or the owners have to do whatever it takes to reduce that noise level. That, that's it.
Okay, I'll take that as an answer, fifty percent. If I may, one more question.
Please.
Through you, Chair. And this one is a more general one. Heat pumps are a reality. And they will likely pop up everywhere in, in Oak Bay. They may, if people are trying to, to conserve energy and, and go green. And I hope people do so. So, is there any procedure where, I mean, when, when staff reviews applications for a, a new building to be built or developed, is there any specific, does the city have, have a procedure to review placement of heat pumps when applications are, are brought to the building? Department is supposed to deal with variances all the time?
I think, even I could answer that one. If they're not, this is a variance, so it's a, it's a setback variance. So, we, we're dealing with the variance aspect of it. The fact that it's causing the noise is, is the reason that the variance is causing some difficulty to approve in this particular case. So, you know, we, we would normally deal with this on a noise bylaw basis. And we've had this problem a number of times with side lot things. So, we try and keep them into the backyard. But if they're within the setbacks, I don't believe we can have any legislative mechanism to say you can't do that. It's just that they end up causing noise problems that we, we're right back to where we started from with, with the noise enforcement. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, somewhat. But my question was very specific. When staff reviews an application, and I'm assuming that there are different aspects or, or a checklist.
So, you're saying if there's no variance asked, would they, would they look at that?
I'm talking about a new house.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Will the department take into account the placement of the heating pump before issuing a permit?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Kirby?
I would move the recommendation.
Moving and seconded, so we have a motion on the table, Counselor Brithwaite.
Forgot my name there for a second. I just, I'm going to vote for this motion, but only because I know and I've heard very clearly around the table that there will be an opportunity for the neighbor if, if the mitigation does not work out and the decibel level is not appropriate, that the neighbor has recourse. Because I think that's really important, that we understand that the neighbor should not be impacted by the heat pump. So, I will vote for the motion. But again, just because I know that the neighbor will have recourse if something happens in the future.
Okay, thank you. May I just ask for clarification? The, the, what's being proposed here right now is on the applicant property, an eight-foot cantilever screen, a new heat pump. And is, there's obviously nothing part of, of this for us, but the, the agreed-upon replacement of the window? Is that, is that part of the, sort of essentially the move-forward piece at this point?
That wasn't part of my report or anything I looked at.
Okay, I'll ask. Mr. Sharples?
I did offer it to the neighbor and I'm more than willing to still offer that.
All right. And is there anybody else who wishes? I guess we're back at the, the table here for, we have a motion on the table. Hold on a second. In the interest of having all the information, please come forward and have a...
Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay. I'm just wondering if decibel levels in the specification, specifications for the new heat pump might be the equivalent of miles per gallon and kilometers per liter in cars. Optimistic, perfect conditions. So, of course, everyone wants a quiet heat pump. So, I think manufacturers probably test for best conditions. And, you know, perhaps the expert could speak to that.
If the applicant wishes to speak to it, he may.
We were just basing that on the manufacturer's specifications. And they were attested according to an acoustical standard. So, I don't have any reason to believe that they're misleading.
Okay, thank you. I'll let the neighbor. Mr. Holmes, welcome back.
Thank you. The question was asked, can the heat pumps be relocated? And Mr. Sharples said it could be relocated to the roof. It also could be relocated to the backyard. Okay? And if any, any of these proposals go through, like the sound screen and so on, what would happen if the house gets sold? Would the, would the new owner be required to keep these things in place or, or not?
That's a good question. I will just ask that of staff to get a definitive answer. Mr. Buffett?
Yeah, the, through the chair, the DVP would run with the land, with the property. So, it's, it's there until, like, if the entire house was removed and the heat pump are removed, then it would be a brand-new building, brand-new application. But this is there built as per this approval, if approved, for not ever, but for a very long time.
Just for clarification, does the DVP actually specify the sound wall and the specifics of that? Or does it specify the setback allowances in the bylaw?
If I may, it, it provides for the siding of a heat pump within the setback. That's the variance that's being considered by committee and council. And I'll just, in addition to Mr. Buffett's comment, again, the noise level is the key issue. If there's a complaint about the noise level with a subsequent owner of the property, we would follow the same process that we would in this instance.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments? Seeing none. We have a motion on the table. So, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Don't see anybody opposed. Thank you.
Move adjournment?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.